I'd like to call and order the Tuesday, March 3 meeting of Monmouth City Council. I want to ask you all to follow the roll, please.
Counselor Carey?
Here.
Counselor Guthrie is not here. Counselor Johnson?
Here.
Counselor Milligan?
Here.
Counselor Shaffer?
Here.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Here.
Mayor Oberst?
Yep. All rise for the flag, please, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Moving on to the consent calendar and this consists of the minutes from the council meeting of February 17th and the work session the same evening, about to have a motion to approve.
This is approval of both.
Second. Moving second, any in favor?
Aye.
And we'll adopt those two sets of minutes. I've been busy with some personal projects that has kept me from doing some of the things I would ordinarily do as mayor, however, we did have the mayor's breakfast last Friday, and it was fairly routine jurisdictional stuff. There's one interesting little piece that's floating out there, and there's an attempt to quantify the economic impact of the Willamette Falls locks, which, as you may know, the Corps of Engineers said they're broken and we're not going to fix them. The users never supplied adequate funds to maintain those locks, but I think the argument is that their effects far beyond just a few boaters moving up and down through those locks. So, we'll see where that goes. It'll be interesting going forward. And then the only other item I have is traffic safety, but I'll get to that after everybody's had a chance to do their reports. At which point, I will turn to Counselor Silvernagle.
Thank you. Senior Center Advisory Board met on February 24th. Got a community breakfast this Saturday, the 7th, 8:30 to 10:30. Their typical first of the month Saturday fundraiser for their programming there and for the facility. Six dollars for adults, three dollars for 12 and under. May 10th, I'm sorry, March 10th at noon, they've got Dr. Rob Winningham doing a gerontology update, kind of some of the new research they're doing there on campus. On March 19th, they got the soup and pie fundraiser. And March 14th, they got a craft supply sales from 9 to 3. So, those are kind of the highlights. Very, very active group, so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Counselor Milligan, arts?
Arts and culture moved the meeting from last Thursday night to next Thursday night, so I'll have a report at the next council meeting.
And I do have an applicant for that committee or commission that I keep forgetting to get ahold of, so I'll see if I can't get that done and pass the application on to somebody who I think's very qualified for that position. Counselor Gunnison, planning?
Well, it was a hearing, so I couldn't attend that meeting. And one thing I did want to do, we do need a person on this historic committee.
Okay. So, if anyone has an interest in historic preservation, let us know, and we'll move through that process. Counselor Carey?
Yes, please. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my net board met last week and reviewed a number of reports. One of the reports was from the marketing committee, and they've indicated that they've got a number of strategies to bolster our subscribers, one of which would be to offer a tiering, a system of tiered, you know, some if you want to pay for it at a very high speed, up to 100 megabits per second. And then down from that. They also indicated that we've got a goal live date for the new website, new MyNet website, which I've seen a preview of it, and it, among other things, will provide better internal communication for the employees, but also a little bit better outside presence. The finance committee recommended, and the board approved, a slight increase in our rates, particularly for data, slightly for data actually, and cable TV was up. And in the case of the cable TV, that's really all driven by the cost of the content that we're purchasing. So, there's really not, you know, we either eat that or we pass that on, and we have decided to pass that on to the subscribers. Numbers, wow, they took a slight dip in January. We have goals and projections for, you know, fairly significant growth and reason to believe that will happen in the next six months. So, things are continuing to improve and become more refined as we go. That's it, thank you.
And then?
John, my understanding was there's actually, and I wasn't there for the vote on the final rates, but my understanding is they did go to the four tiers, the two megabits, 30 megabits, 80, and then 100, I think are the four.
Seventy-five, I thought.
Seventy-five, okay. My understanding was that there's actually, for folks that are on the 30-megabit rate, they'll be decreasing by a whole dollar, going from $41 down to $40.
And if you look at the, I just happened to be on MyNet's homepage last night, and there are listings of such packages.
Yeah.
On the homepage, so.
I think that's important, and I think that you don't see that happen. You don't see the rates go down.
Right.
Ever, and hopefully they can make that work.
Yeah, yeah.
And then there was also a mention, John or Scott, maybe you all know about this, that on that webpage about, there were some interesting things going on with data in February, so we contacted our, basically our data supplier and doubled our MyNet's reach to the outside world to handle the increasing traffic locally as more and more people take more and more data.
Yeah, well, that's, you know, data hogs are becoming increasingly prevalent.
I heard a story actually on the radio yesterday, that as you look at the new 4X or something TVs that are super, super high definition, that anything under 100 megabits will not serve if you have two or three of those in the house, so download somewhere. You know, I think we're going to see people requiring that amount of data just to watch, you know, streaming off the internet, however they take their television. But with those televisions, they suck so much bandwidth, that alone is going to be a draw for the data stream. Okay. We had traffic safety meeting last night, and just a few quick items. I had suggested to Chief the notion of adding, we can add fines higher in school zones, our school crossings. And it doesn't mean that the officers will write a bigger ticket for a violation in that school zone, but it gives them the power to do so if somebody's being a real knucklehead about school zones. So, we have those signs up now, right, Chief? And if you look at the school crossing signs, you'll know that we'll add it on the sign that says fine tire. There's a series of ODOT projects on the horizon. This summer, we'll see north from Hoffman Road to all the way to Amity resurfaced. My understanding is that's a little bit of leftover Columbia River Crossing money, that it was one of those that needs to get spent or it'll be gone, so.
I'm sorry, John, I was talking about 99.
Yeah, yeah. Now, from Hoffman Road north to Amity. In 2016, the plan is to come in, you may have noticed a lot of surveying activity in town last year, and the notion is to come in and from Hoffman Road to the South City limits of Monmouth, rework 99. And that includes making curbs from one block to the next actually line up and putting in planar strips where it's possible to do so, and I'm not sure what all, I'm sure we'll get more details on that as we go forward. And then this summer was going to be preliminary engineering and right-of-way acquisition for the top of the hill down to the S-curve project with construction next summer, and that has all been pushed back a year or so. Next year, we'll see preliminary engineering and right-of-way, and in 2017, that construction will take place. And ODOT's taking the lead on that rather than, you know, as we did the first part of the S-curve, we had some ODOT money and some of our money and some of the property owners' money on the inside of the curve all pooled together to do that project, and we took the lead on finding the contractor, et cetera. This time, ODOT's going to take all of that for us. We have asked for some kind of pedestrian protection in 99 and Madrona, and that's still a no, but Russ is continuing to work on it. And we had a request for us to have a look over the long term at the corner of Mark Court, West Jackson, no, not Mark Court, I'm sorry, Stadium, West Jackson. And there's actually a nice drawing on the wall that the folks who presented last night left for us to have a look at. There's concerns about lack of sidewalks, lack of sidelines, et cetera, so we will continue to look at it and go on forward. Next meeting is June 1st, and as I pointed out to Chief, site may be subject to negotiations, because hopefully we'll be in the new police station by then, and maybe we can use the meeting room there. We'll go forward from there. Any community announcements? I understand from one of our guests that Central had a lead at halftime, so we'll keep our fingers crossed on that one.
Okay, I have no community announcement. We didn't even remind you, but it looks like the May 16th is our historic day here in the city, put on by the Historic Committee, so keep that in mind.
Okay.
May 16th is kind of the, having many big announcements, but that's the one they're shooting for every time.
Okay.
If it's okay with council, I'd like to take just four or five minutes to do an update on where the rural tourism studio's going with some of its bike programs.
Sure.
So, Jesse, if you wouldn't mind, try to coalesce that as best I could, say one of those and pass it down. I'd half intended to actually be able to showcase some of this live, we're working with some internet stuff, but I just didn't have time to run home and get a laptop that I forgot, so I apologize for that. So, I sent out some links prior, I've got plenty of these coming, don't worry about that. I sent out some links prior, talking about one of the partnerships that's come out pretty quickly with a group out of Portland called the Ride with GPS. And so, there's a fitness app that works on your phone, works on the website. There's a lot of companies around the world that are doing this, but we're fortunate enough to have one based in Portland. We thought we should probably just give them a call and see what they're doing. So, I did that, and as it happens, they were rolling out this ambassador program. If I could describe how the system works, generally what somebody would do is they'd roll into a town like Monmouth, they'd pull out their phone, they say, "I want to go for a bike ride." And it pulls up all the routes that people have identified in Monmouth. And so, if you take a look at the very last page, you will see that I just did within 25 miles of Monmouth, excuse me, second to last page, within 25 miles of Monmouth, there's 9,129 routes for them to choose from. And they all go every which way, and there's sort of, who knows what roads they're taking, et cetera. So, what we did with this ambassadors program is we actually got together, chose the best routes, and now, out of those 9,129 routes, three of our routes pop right to the top. Ours is the very first three of the 9,000, and they're long roads that we've determined offer the best in terms of safety, offer the best in terms of access to our local businesses, to our natural wildlife, to the other attractions that we have, state parks, et cetera. And so, it's a way for us to make sure that the people can know best what this town has to offer, its citizens, get to kind of steer people in the right direction. So, what you see in front of you, the first page is the press release, it just went live yesterday, so this is a brand-new program, 24 hours old. The second page shows a map of Oregon, and then each one of these lines, these blue lines represents a route. So, once again, somebody's looking for a ride in a particular part of Oregon, and they have users in the United Kingdom, they have users in Canada, this is an international program. So, if somebody's looking to come to Oregon, they just look at the piece of Oregon they're planning on staying at, they took on a route. Our stuff pops up along with our branding, our pictures. Second piece down shows some of the pictures of what this looks like when it's all said and done to the folks out there. And then this last piece is a detailed description of one of the routes, and I went through the trouble of pulling out my yellow highlighter and actually highlighting this, because it's kind of tough to tell in the black and white. There's a lot of these links, so I highlighted, for instance, the link to Deal Bikes Plus, the folks right across the street. And what will happen is, when somebody's going through and researching, "Hey, do I want to come to Monmouth Independence Dallas Pope County area and stay there for a little while, let's see if they have our bike routes," they'll not only see the route and get the description, but they'll be able to click on these and be taken to a picture and a website link and a description of various points of interest along the way. So, what we're looking to do is, any business that's registered as a bike-friendly business, we would link them up to this so that folks that are traveling through can see Deal Bikes Plus, and they can see the Three-Legged Dog over there in Independence, and they can see the Chateau Road Hop Farms. People that are registered as bike-friendly businesses get a little extra economic boost from free advertising through this app. So, that's my brief overview of what we've been up to. In terms of next steps, we're looking to grow the route database to identify more of these opportunities, both to north and south throughout the county, that we can identify some routes and keep this local economic boost going. We're trying to increase the number of bike-friendly businesses in partnership with the Chamber, raising some awareness around the program. It costs nothing to become a bike-friendly business, and most people are already doing what it takes to be a bike-friendly business anyway. It's simply the free recognition of filling out 10 minutes' worth of application materials. We're looking to build local marketing materials for these routes and other incentives, and then capitalize on the opportunities presented by Cycle Oregon and Bike MS will both be here this summer. And that is all.
Thank you.
Great work. And Marshall, thanks for the memories. Going back to traffic safety just briefly, we also have a request in for sheriffs, as they're called on Main Street, and I'm still suggesting a little bit to see if it's appropriate. Anything else, any announcements, council? Manager, if you're aboard?
Yeah, just one note, our street funding task force met for a second time, and they quickly narrowed our options down to a couple utility fees, so either street utility fee or stormwater. We're now doing some judgment levels of service, trying to figure out what we should shoot for, and then we'll back that into some rates, and I think they'll get to a conclusion pretty quickly. Maybe begin next week.
Very good. Okay, citizen comments tonight? Again, seeing none, we'll turn to the business agenda, and first item is our Polk County Commission, who are here. Presentation on the public safety lab, we'll be coming up on the dot. Who's up?
Oh, I'm on it. Thank you.
And I'm going to make you do this, name and city for the record.
Yeah, not a problem. Mayor Oberst, members of the committee, I'm Craig Polk, Polk County Commissioner, 15040 Airley Road, Monmouth, Oregon. And I'm here with my esteemed colleagues to address the council tonight with regard to a levy that we have plus put on the May 19th ballot for 45 cents a thousand for our public safety needs and to try and enhance our sheriff's department, our jail, and our DA's office. And each of these folks are going to have some pieces to add in here, but we're here tonight to ask for your support and your help. We need to have everybody involved in this, and I'll start with Mr. Hanson.
You need my name and?
Yes.
Greg Hanson, Polk County Administrator, 565 Southeast Cypress Avenue, Dallas, Oregon.
You don't have to give us the address, just the city.
Okay.
We don't want anybody tracking you down.
I'll give you a little background of how we got here. In November, I wrote a recommendation to our Board of Commissioners to consider a public safety operating levy. That levy, as Commissioner Polk just stated, was for an amount of 45 cents per thousand for a duration of five years. That levy was to restore 22 FTE to our public safety programs, five in the DA's office, five in the jail, 12 in patrol, and also enhance our juvenile detention beds from the four contracted beds that we have now up to six contracted beds. And the basis for that decision was, in 2008, we had about 112 FTE in our public safety division, which makes up the sheriff patrol and jail, the DA, community corrections, and our juvenile programs. So, we had 112. Today, we have 78. So, we've lost approximately 34 positions over the course of these last six, seven years. And that's primarily due to the downturn in property tax revenue and also the loss of ONC revenue. Those are the two primary causes, at least on the revenue side, which have caused us to have to pare down our public safety division. Prior to that, we had probably pared down most of our other general fund departments, but what was last remaining departments was our public safety departments, and those were the last to fill the hits, and they felt them pretty strongly in the last three to five years. So, that was the basis for the levy. As you know, in November of 2013, we went out for a similar levy. That levy was in an amount of 60 cents per thousand. This one's 25% less, and that duration for that levy was four years. This one, however, is going to last five years. So, that's the basis for the levy. I will let the sheriff and the DA talk a little more about what it means to them and the system that we currently have, which in my opinion is broken at the moment, so.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Bob Wolf, independent resident. Again, as you've heard, the county's seeking this levy for the purposes of restoring the public safety programs that are essential to our safe communities, both in the city of Monmouth as well as the county. Oftentimes, you know, if the question is asked, "Well, why do city residents need, you know, more sheriff patrols?" Well, the reality is, is that we provide a backup resource to your municipal officers as well as serve as, you know, the support for them in major crimes, whenever there's a major crime. And the other thing that we perform a function for is help support the fire and EMS personnel. We've had quite a few situations outside your cities, but it's now beginning to have an impact on the city resources because law enforcement from the sheriff's office is not available to respond to certain things that need to be stabilized to allow the medics to be able to get in and take care of the situation. So, some of the cities, and occasionally Monmouth, is end up putting in a situation where they're have to respond outside the city, taking your resources from your city out into the county to provide for protection. The other issue is, you know, OSP is not available after 2 o'clock, and the superintendent of the state police has already said he does not have the resources to be able to replace the sheriff's office patrols over here in the county. We're part of the drug team that has been around for years, it's called POINT, and because of our loss of personnel, it has caused the cities to not be able to have resources with the staffing from the sheriff's office to be able to keep POINT active. And just since the team got shut down in June of last year, there's been a 74% decrease in drug activity and arrests. That doesn't mean that we've been crushing crime, it just means that it's not out there being discovered and we're able to handle those things. Another big factor, because it's all about public safety and the umbrella of the DA's office, but you also have the Polk County Jail, which serves your city agency. Every arrest that is made by the Monmouth Police Department is taken to the Polk County Jail and processed there. Polk County does not charge the city for the use of the jail. If you take prisoners through municipal court, by law, I could impose a fee, a daily bed fee, for all municipal prisoners that are brought in. We don't do that, haven't done that, and I don't want to do that. The jail was supported by Monmouth when it was originally passed its bond, and so that's one of the reasons that we really don't want to end up having to go back to it. But it really gets down to the issue of money, and I never thought in my career that I would be talking about dollars and cents to the level that I am, but it's essential for the sheriff's office to be able to assist your citizens when they leave Monmouth and drive to Salem. Because once you leave the city limits, if something happens that you need law enforcement for, it's not the city of Monmouth that's going to come out and investigate that, it's the sheriff's office. So, you know, our civil process also serves residents of Monmouth. I'm mandated by law to provide civil, and so it's another function that the sheriff's office performs inside the city. So, I don't want to take up a lot of your time unless you have some other specific questions in need that we can let the district attorney speak.
Thank you, Sheriff. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm grateful for the opportunity to come before you tonight and just talk about what my office does and share with my colleagues on the public safety team, and I consider the commissioner certainly to be part of the public safety team. I also commit, consider this council to be part of the public safety team in Polk County, certainly for what I do, because I am, in addition to community corrections, one of the agencies in the county that really comprehensively supports what you do. I am your district attorney's office. Monmouth, you have a very fine municipal prosecution office, and you decided to support that, and I think that is a very solid investment you've made, and I think it pays dividends. And talking to Chief Tallon, I know that he really appreciates that work that your municipal prosecutor does. But where the boundary stops from what the municipal prosecutor does, it's where my office picks up. And I'd just like to, before I go into some statistics, because a lot of numbers kind of gets thrown around in this conversation we're having about the levy, let me talk about what, you know, my office has done for the city of Monmouth just today and tomorrow. The stuff I was in court today, we sentenced an individual who was caught by and processed by three city of Monmouth police officers, a person who was on your streets, driving under the influence of methamphetamine. One of your officers pulled him over just because he had a suspicion about this person, ran his license plate, found out the person was driving while suspended, and in the course of processing that person, found out that he was carrying a restricted weapon, he was a convicted felon, had brass knuckles on his person, got that violation as well during the course of the stop, found methamphetamine in the car. Another officer from the city of Monmouth has called to cover that officer, did a fine job in doing that, and in the course of the stop, another officer from the city of Monmouth participated, processing the person, found out that he was under the influence of methamphetamine. And all through their training, which you support through your tax dollars, we're able to process that person, got convicted of being under the influence of intoxicants, possession of a controlled substance, methamphetamine, and for the brass knuckles as well. That person's going to spend the next month in the Polk County Jail, but they're also going to be on probation and hopefully get some help to get off the controlled substance, get off the drugs as well. That's all because of what your fine police officer from the city of Monmouth did, but it's also because my office was able to prosecute that individual. Tomorrow, more of your Monmouth police officers are going to be in my office for grand jury, doing a multi-jurisdictional investigation, assisting folks from Independence and also the city of Dallas that have a major traffic stop involving drugs, kids, there'll be three defendants involved with that. That's what we're doing with the city of Monmouth. Also, your detectives, Sergeant Dorn and Detective Carpenter, regularly in our office doing major crimes with my felony deputies, major sex crimes, child abuse crimes, we prosecute those all the time. To me, those are success stories about what we're able to do with the city of Monmouth. Where I get frustrated and the challenge I have, I also know there's a backlog. Some cases that have been referred to us from the city of Monmouth aren't prosecuted as quickly as they should be. We have a backlog. Those files sit, and they sit. And it frustrates me because we have so many files, I don't have enough prosecutors to get it done. I think the people of the city of Monmouth deserve better than that. The police officers from the city of Monmouth deserve better service than that. And the only reason is that we are the smallest office in the state for a county of this size. Polk County has 76,000 to 77,000 people, and I just range that number because you all know that when school is in session at Western, that population can go up. I also know on the weekends, out in Grand Ron, that casino, that population can go up on certain weekends, because not only do we serve the people in the city of Monmouth for your police officers, and also sheriff's deputies when they're out on patrol, we also serve the city of Salem, the city of Independence, the city of Dallas. We also get Oregon State Police, we handle their folks as well. But also, since the sheriff has pulled back from Grand Ron, they have a police department out there, they're sending us folks as well. So, we're basically getting, even the sheriff's patrols are down a bit, and their numbers are down, we're getting additional calls that come our way from those other jurisdictions too. So, we're maintaining a fairly busy level overall, yet I only have three criminal prosecutors plus myself. I carry a full caseload of felonies and misdemeanors, so we have basically four prosecutors in my office. That's less than Tillamook County. Tillamook County has 25,000 people in it, just to give an example. That's why we're struggling, being able to just get the job done. We haven't made any cuts as to what we prosecute. I don't want to have to do so. I believe that if we get the levy, if the levy should pass, and we do get these additional I believe that if we get the levy, if the levy should pass and we do get these additional prosecutors, I'm not gonna have to make those hard decisions about what I do and don't have to prosecute, don't want to. Didn't get elected to make those decisions. Um, so that's why I think, uh, it'll make a real difference. I say it's transformational. It's transformational just in the sense that we'll get a level where similar sized counties will be in terms of the numbers of prosecutors and staff. So, I really, again, I appreciate the opportunity and I'd be happy to answer any specific questions you may have.
Council, if you have questions for our panel?
I have one. I, I look at your, your, your levy that you want, is that gonna be able to fund this program? You started pretty fast, at eighteen months, you figured it'd be up pretty close to replace the people you have. What I'm saying is, is there enough money there to go the whole five years? Do you have enough, have you built in enough to go for the raises, for the increase in everything? And, you know, our tax rate's not gonna, I mean, our taxes are not going up that fast. So, that's what I'm asking, is that forty-five cents gonna make it through five years? Have you, has that been built in, or is that a?
I believe it will. Um, you have obviously the natural growth and the assessed value and that, um, I believe that we will have some initial savings at the start of, of the levy, because the sheriff won't be able to hire all those employees right away.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and we will use that to cushion. The only thing that could influence that and severely influence that is wonderful, the wonderful PERS, um, rates that we have to, we'll have to go through PERS rates at least two more times beyond this, this levy amount, um, of rate increases potential, um, so. But I, I believe that it will be adequate to fund the twenty-two positions that we have.
Well, I have a question, I want you to, Sheriff Wolf, you mentioned that you handle the civil issues within the city limits, can you go in more detail into that?
Sure. Uh, restraining order service, uh, sheriff's office serves all the restraining orders, we also enter those into the system for, uh, the city of Monmouth. Uh, we also do, if there's a court order for a child custody issue, you pick up a child and turn them over to somebody, uh, sheriff's office comes into the city and takes care of that. Uh, if you are a landlord and have people that move into your rental and then refuse to move out because they haven't paid their rent, it's the sheriff's office that comes in and does the, what's called a forced eviction of the dwelling. Um, we, um, assist with property seizures and property foreclosures, uh, when homes go into bankruptcy and then the court order the, the property taken into the sheriff's custody, uh, to determine, uh, sale or disposition of that property, it's the sheriff's office that has to take care of that. That's all mandates for the sheriff, it's not something that the city police agencies can do or the Oregon State Police under, or else only the sheriff can perform some of those functions.
Nice, any questions, Steve?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I have one. In the, um, in the failed levy, uh, a year and a half ago, how many off, or how many FTE were you after at that point?
I believe the numbers we were looking at with the sixty cents per thousand, um, were about twenty-five to twenty-eight.
And we're twenty-two now?
Yep.
And what's the difference? I mean, numerically, I understand, but where, where are they?
There, there were some increases in community corrections, some additional increases in the sheriff's office patrol. Um, I think Aaron's office remained about static from what we had in the original one, and there was additional bodies in the jail. So, those took cuts, we also took reductions and, um, we built in a lot more contingency for that levy. Um, and we touched, I looked at it pretty hard and that's how we were able to shrink that amount along with the FTE shrinkage too.
Well, public safety, of course, is, is, uh, one of the primary functions of any governmental entity, it seems, and, and you hear that all the time, uh, at, at the national level as well as, as, as our level, and so, um, you know, I, it, from my perspective, uh, the system that we have with the sheriff all the way through the, the, the district attorney's office, seems to be a fairly, well, not fairly, it seems to be quite an efficient one and a good one. And so, you're providing the, the required functions and the necessary functions that, uh, that you'd be expected and, and, uh, it's, it's my hope that the, uh, citizens of Polk County will recognize that and, and, um, step up to the plate and, uh, you know, no free lunch out there, as you all know, and so, um, uh, it, it's time that we all sort of toe the line and get her done.
Any questions?
And I got, I got.
Go ahead.
Well, one I'm gonna say is, I wanna thank our city because I asked for a little deal of how much we responded in the county and to help out. In twenty thirteen, we did thirty-three times, and in twenty fourteen, we did forty-seven times to help out the county. So, we did try to help you on it, which we understand, and we'd like those people back to town. My last question I have, and I know this levy was put together really fast for time factors, being defeated and started and looking, why, and this, I'm just, I wanna say, why don't we do like a couple other counties and we have two rate structures, one for the city, one for the county? Because we know we have to pay for the jail, the DAA, all the stuff you do. I mean, let's just look at, uh, Duchesnes County, they pay ninety-three cents a thousand for the sheriff's department in town. Rural, that's out in La Pine, Sisters, they pay a dollar forty, if you want the road service, then the county has to pay for it. If you, and the rest of it, and then they're also paying on the jail. So, why wasn't something like that brought, because the big defeat was in the town on the amount of cost of the budget? So, I'm just, I'm, I'm probably late on the board, but I'm just saying, why wasn't something like that brought out here? I mean, two different levies, basically, or two different tax structures, because that is true. That kinda solves a lot of people's question, because you can say, we paid ninety-three cents a thousand for the jail and everything that you do within the cities, but if you want more people on the road, then this is what it's gonna cost you in the rural area. Was that ever brought up?
Thomas J. Hassel's a fiscal guy. Yeah, um, yeah, those questions were vetted throughout the process. Duchesnes County is the only county that has that rate structure, and how they have done it is they've created two law enforcement districts. Those are separate government bodies, um, with their own permanent tax rates, um, and they spent years in the making of, of doing that. I think that process came to fruition after about ten years. They, they began with one and then they created the hybrid with two different rates.
And with their levies, we're only for two years, that's all they have had was their, their sheriff, and it was only for two years. Every two years, they had to go for a new levy.
Well.
And we're going for five here, not just.
Right, and you can't go for two years anyway, you have to go for a minimum of three. Um, but, yeah, they had short duration, but they did create that. They are the only one in the state that has done that. Um, we did talk about it, that is very complicated and very difficult to do, and came to the conclusion that that wasn't a good option at this time.
However, I would add that it's not off the table for us as we look at, and I think that's very responsible for all of us to be considering those things for the future. And I think the first thing that we need to do is make certain that we have the appropriate bridge for survival today, and then continue to bring all the community together and have a more robust conversation about how that looks for all Polk County citizens, because we have similar arguments with, you know, focused not arguments or conversations with people in West Salem who see the same kinds of things. So, um, we have been having those conversations to make certain that we're looking forward. Um, but we're, we're still in this quagmire with Congress right now and trying to figure out what the real funding's gonna look like for the future. So, we don't wanna be too premature in putting a very complex taxing structure together that may or may not come to full fruition, but within this five-year period, I'm very confident we're gonna have better answers to that question.
Could you speak more to the police station that's out of Grand Ron and how that's added to the police force in the county and how, uh, that has helped with the reduction or ne, uh, need of police sheriff out, out in Grand Ron, or just speak to that matter for, please?
Yes, with the establishment of the Grand Ron Tribal Police Department, uh, the sheriff's office used to contract with the Confederate Tribes of Grand Ron for law enforcement services. As they started building their police department up, they got the first officer and then the second, they started cutting back the sheriff's office. And so, the tribal police are only responsible for tribal lands. They are peace officers, certified peace officers in the state, so they have the same authority as Monmouth would have, um, or, you know, any other peace officer in the state. But the primary thing that they handle out there is the casino and tribal housing and the governance center and the powwow grounds. They have, uh, responded to some calls off of the reservation land, uh, because we don't have anybody available, but, um, the, it was actually just a shift. I mean, we had about twenty-six percent of the total call load of the sheriff's office when we were under contract with them was all just in the Grand Ron area. So, uh, I, matter of fact, I just got the stats from the Grand Ron Tribal Police today and they handled just a little over four thousand calls, uh, last year in Grand Ron, uh, in their, on their tribal land. By comparison, the sheriff's office, um, in two thousand thirteen, we handled over twenty-one thousand calls, and this year in two thousand fourteen.
In Grand Ron?
No, total.
Total?
Total. They handled four thousand calls just in Grand Ron on tribal land. So, the sheriff's office as a whole handled twenty-one thousand calls.
So, they're taking care of ten to fifteen percent of what the sheriff's department used to take care of?
Under contract. I had extra deputies just, just to provide patrol coverage out there. They were assigned only to the Grand Ron area.
Okay.
So, but, um, last year, in third, in two thousand thirteen, we handled over twenty-one thousand calls, and because since March of fourteen, we've been down to only ten hours a day, we just barely broke fourteen thousand calls this year.
And so, moving forward, we will not, you will not be providing that service to Grand Ron since they're providing for themselves, correct?
Correct.
And how many, how many officers were you have, have on just to cover that area?
Back then, we had, um, at least two on.
Two.
Right, and so, but now we have nobody on, particularly after ten o'clock. So, of the two or three officers that I do have on, they're still covering stuff out in the perimeter of Grand Ron, but we're not responsible for anything specifically on tribal lands.
Thank you.
And at the peak of that service, we contracted, they contracted about seven deputies with us, and that continued to, to, and to like the sheriff said, down to the last version with about four deputies.
What was the total amount of deputies that we're gonna be bringing on, or FTEs?
There's gonna be a total of twenty-two, um, FTEs, twelve in the patrol division, five in the jail, five in the prosecution office.
When was the last time you had twelve, could fulfill that, or how long ago did we lose twelve? I mean, when, when was the last time we had twelve more officers?
Well, we've been losing them since two thousand.
Three years ago?
Three years ago, we had those twelve.
Two.
So, it's taken three years to lose them.
So, John, you commented earlier, you know, that, uh, law enforcement is a key function of government, and, um, I wanted to just ask council, would there be an interest in a resolution of support for this ballot measure? And that we could ask, uh, Councilor Sherrill, Lisa, write it up for us for next meeting? Um, what do y'all think?
So, I'd like to, to open a discussion, I'd like to make a motion that we draft a resolution of support for the, the bond measure, levy measure, excuse me.
Seconded that. Okay. No, that, no.
Well, we, we're discussing.
It's a motion, so there ought to be discussions.
Okay, so, I think, I think the, the piece that I personally, the reason why I would support the levy is the, um, not to, not to diminish the work that any part of, of this levy would support, but for me, the, the, the need in the, in the district attorney's office has, I think, great impact, especially amongst the population of Western. We know that there are felony cases that emerge, um, at Western, and those need to be taken care of in a timely fashion. These are students who are going through one of the most stressful parts of their lives, uh, being financially strapped. The majority of our Western students are financially strapped, and so to put emotional strain on top of a financial strain greatly diminishes their capacity for doing well at school. And so, I think they need resolution to cases, uh, we all need resolution to cases. And I think that that goes for, for both sides. I think that certainly if somebody's popped up a methamphetamines with brass knuckles, maybe it seems like an open and shut case, but let's not presume guilt. There are folks that have been brought in on felony charges who have been waiting for their day in court, both the victims and the accused, trying to get this thing resolved.
Mm-hmm.
Doesn't matter what side you're sitting on, you just wanna move on. And right now, they can't do that, they're being held up because the, the, the office is not properly staffed to handle the caseload that's being sent their way. So, uh, no disrespect to any other, other piece of the, the functions. For me, the reason why I'm primarily in favor of, of endorsing this is because I think that we need to, we need to be able to resolve the work that Monmouth Police and, and the sheriff are doing, we need to be able to, to finish up, to wrap up what they've started.
Anybody else, any comment?
Well, I think that, I think that, I, I, as I recall, we, we did not have a resolution in, in the last, uh, election, um, and, um, and I don't recall the logic behind that, but nonetheless, I don't think we did. Um, however, um, seeing the impact of, of, you know, failure, uh, the impact on Monmouth, uh, city of Monmouth, citizens within Monmouth, and our role in the, in, in the greater Polk County community, uh, you know, I think, I mean, it's a price poker, if you're gonna, if you're gonna live in a, in, in a civilized society, you've gotta have some means by which to make sure you, you keep it civilized. So, so it's our responsibility to do that. And, um, knowing the, the principles involved here, I think that they've done a, um, an excellent job of framing the issue and, um, and, and putting forward the given. You can nitpick the, you know, a, a comma here or a, or a decimal point there, but the reality is, is we need protection for citizens in, in, and all of the other law enforcement and criminal justice functions in Polk County. And we don't have it right now, and frankly, we're a laughing stock as a result of it. So, we need to step forward, and I think as, if, from our positions of leadership, um, I think we need to, um, we need to strong support this.
And I, I know, I already said I might be sorry, there's one more thing I wanted to say, we're talking about a five-year levy is the other thing. I know that five years isn't, isn't, uh, a short period of time, but it's not forever either. And so, the conversations that we need to be having around the, the ways that we're funding our county operations and the, the rising cost of things like PERS, those are conversations that need to be having, have, we need to be having. A yes vote on this levy or us endorsing it does not preclude us from having those conversations, but what it allows us to do is keep running for five years while we figure this out.
So, with that, um, I'm just gonna run down to this real quick and, and see is there an interest in bringing a resolution forward, it's not to vote yea or nay on the resolution, but to ask Lane to draft something the next time, so.
Well, did you make a motion, Mark?
I made a motion that we would ask Lane to draft a resolution.
You can just call for a vote on, voice vote on that?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll just call for a voice vote in favor.
All right.
Close, start writing. Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Okay. The next item up is the, uh, liquor license application, Sergeant.
Mayor, members of the council, thank you. Um, I have a staff report for the, uh, Jim Bar and Grill that's located at four twenty-three, uh, Main Street East. Uh, they, uh, have applied for a liquor license. Uh, previously, this was the Black Diamond Bar and Grill, which is no longer. Uh, the application's for full on premises sales. Uh, the restaurant will serve an American cuisine consisting of appetizers, salads, hamburgers, uh, along, along with hard alcoholic drinks, beer and wine. Uh, they have plans for karaoke, uh, dance floor, uh, and a future lottery room. Um, they do, the applicants have some experience as business owners, uh, they currently own and operate David Kearns Construction. Um, the background investigation I conducted, uh, did reveal a few potential areas of concern. Um, some of those, um, on the application, Adaria Corporation Incorporated, Corporation Incorporated is the entity listed, uh, on the applicant for the liquor license. Uh, David Kearns and his wife Debbie Kearns are, are also listed on the application as persons who have both funded and operated the establishment. Uh, both Dave and Debbie have some negative financial history, uh, they have some bankrupt, bankruptcies, most current showing in twenty-ten. Um, they've listed they'll fund a business of personal funds in the amount of forty-five thousand. Um, Mr. and Mrs. Kearns, they've listed they do not have any experience owning or managing or working in a liquor outlet. And, uh, currently in December of last year, Mr. Kearns was arrested for DUI in Monmouth. Um, he's currently in, uh, diversion and, until May of this year. Um, and his license is suspended as a result of that, uh, he does have hardship permit. So, I would open it for discussion.
You have any questions for the sergeant?
Do you have any questions for the sergeant?
So I looked, excuse me, I'm pulling up the agenda. If the business is registered under Adaria Corporation, is there any other history on that company? I couldn't find any.
No, I couldn't find any.
Okay. Just want to make sure I wasn't missing anything.
Why would they have Adaria on their applicant if they're going to be funding it with their personal funds? Is there a reason?
I don't-
Have you seen that before?
I don't know. This is, I've just taken over this job of doing liquor licenses, so I'm not sure.
Have you seen that before?
I don't think it's that unusual.
Well, the corporation could be an S corporation in which personal funds are used, and they could be putting the forty-five thousand as their own stock in exchange.
It just started the corporation. No history.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
And I just wanted to note that we have options of recommending in favor, against, or make no recommendation at all, and the staff recommendation is to not make a recommendation.
And I should point out, if the council were to move toward a recommendation against approval, you may remember this exercise, we do have to hold a published notice and hold a public hearing in that case. We don't have to on approval, and we do not have to on a no recommendation motion.
So, what do you got?
Well, I look at, and actually, we've been down and trying to come back, at least we're trying to get business in the town, one more place to occupy. I see a strike against him on DUI, but I make a motion that we go ahead and send it into the OLCC for approval of the liquor license.
So you would recommend in favor of approving rather than no recommendations?
Well, what I'm trying to do is I'm trying to cover stuff. Say if things didn't really work out, because we still have the right to pull it back after a year or two if we want to-
Oh, OLCC has the license.
The bottom line is that we make recommendations and OLCC does if they see fit.
Right.
We don't do that.
And I would say too, that OLCC treats a no recommendation as a recommendation in favor, has the same effect. I make no recommendation.
Okay, so your motion is no recommendation.
Second?
Any further discussion? Tell us? Oh, yeah, go ahead, sorry.
So we're going on the no recommendation.
I can just do this by voice vote.
Sure.
In favor of the motion?
Aye.
I oppose. And with that, we'll send a no recommendation recommendation. Okay, and now to the community engagement in the public's election. I was a little surprised to see this on the main agenda. I was figuring we'd chat a talk session, but I'm game. So anybody have any observations or comments that they'd like to make? We had four finalists come in, and we interviewed all four of those. It was an interesting process. I think the first applicant was bombarded with questions, and the second one answered most of those questions. We asked a few more, and the third one answered all the questions we asked the first two. But it was good stuff all around, and just headed in the right direction. So anybody have any comment on any of the four finalists that they would like to see a selection in one direction or another?
So I have a strong preference. Anyone else have a strong preference?
Maybe.
Okay. So I'll say right now, my strong preference is for BDS. I know that they are situated, make sure I got my, they're the ones situated in Seattle, correct? Make sure I got my piece of paperwork here. I know that there was some concern over being more distant and the amount of contact that we would have with them, but I was most impressed with their strategy. I thought it was the most comprehensive of the groups, and it wasn't like they were there for all four presentations. I didn't hear a lot of parrying. I heard that they had a very clear vision, that they had a plan for outreach to all the members that might comprise our community. And the reason why I say might comprise is because they didn't come in with, I think, a lot of perceptions about what our community is. And I think that, as I mentioned last week, that's almost in some ways better. I think that we have already a strong identity, which despite new members of the community coming in, hasn't changed a lot. And I think that we're seen in a certain way, and we've been seen in a certain way for many, many decades by both people internal and external to the community. And I think that bringing these folks in from the outside without as much of a preconceived notion of what Monmouth is and how it interacts with Western, Independence, Dallas, and everywhere else, is a huge benefit. So beyond what I thought is their generally strong strategy, the strong capabilities of the people that would comprise that team, I thought they had other things going for them, including a distance from where we've been that would prove vital in leading us into where we're going.
I heard somebody on the internet was strong.
Yeah, I listened to the tapes, saw what I'm hearing, and kind of went through the book. I liked the Cogan Owens thing. And the reason I kind of liked them was that the way they worked, the area that they've already done jobs in, the staff performance on work. And the second thing was that I liked their goal-setting ideas. And last, their general manager, we're not saying the leader of the group, but had something, you know, his was a lot of time that he was going to present into it. In other words, it wasn't like three percent, it was, I think it was about fifty-five percent or something. So you have one lead person to really go to, and that's what I looked at. Some of the others, you know, they're all big names, but maybe thirty percent or forty percent was the people that did the stuff. That was my thought.
Okay. Anybody have anything to throw out?
I kind of had two.
Go ahead.
Barney and Worth, and then BDS. And Marshall pretty much capped up my feelings about BDS, and then Barney and Worth. I think part of what I was looking at was which of the group had the least experience in Monmouth, Independence, Polk County. They could look at us with fresh eyes, and that's what BDS was bringing to the table. Barney Worth a little bit more of that, I mean, a little less than that, but I like both of their strategies.
I'll jump on the bandwagon. BDS really kind of took in a direction of new eyes on our city, bring a new perspective, hopefully. Their strategy seems to really coincide with what we're looking at to achieve. They focused on an engagement project and had some fantastic folks that I feel would really be able to target some areas that may have not been targeted, but more than anything, come in with fresh eyes and maybe give us something different than we've seen from all the, from every other group.
John, Darren? I'll just throw in, I had HDR as my number one choice. And I think one of the things that I was looking at was not so much the firm and the head person in the firm as the person who's on the ground and actually going to be engaging the citizens and bringing them in. And I was very impressed with that person at HDR. Real standout. I think BDS had some good folks on board too, but HDR stood out for me as, you know, they had a good plan, they had good experience on getting people involved, and I think my sense of things with that person was that that would be a really good, you know, be able to reach out to the community. I have some concerns actually about cogging on a screen because actually the level of experience they have in the area, you know, that I'd really like to have a fresh set of eyes. And I have high regard for RDI, Rob Dalton initiatives, but they've done so much work in this town that they know all the usual suspects, and I'm afraid that might be a direction that I think it wind up going because of all the work with the Ford Family Foundation leadership training. So, you know, that's actually was why I moved out and down the list. And again, I was impressed with all of them, but I had HDR and Barney and Worth on top of my stack, and BDS is one that had some real benefits to it as well.
I thought they were all four really capable. I was pleased with the way they all actually come across. So I think any one of them would probably do a good job for us. The top two, after thinking through it more, I had Barney and Worth and then BDS. And the only negative I had with BDS was I think we'd have to adjust the schedule a little bit. I'm assuming they'd be willing to do that. That was the only real negative that I had on that one. But again, they're all four very capable, I think, so I think we go too long with any play.
Anybody down here have anything to add? John?
Well, my preference was towards Barney and Worth, although I was concerned about a couple of their things. I mean, they projected a very aggressive timeline that was going to be very difficult to meet. This is what they do, is what they told us, and I agree with that. But I, on the other hand, appreciate the fact that they've got some local, you know, relatively local work with Independence, I think. And so I'm not concerned with this sort of the newness, the freshness. I mean, everybody talks about going out to where the people are, and so they're, so I think any of them would get there. You know, I had a whole hard time getting my hands around, you know, the BDS was certainly good, and I don't know their third or second or third for me. But nonetheless, I had a little difficult time drilling down the number of meetings that they were going to have, this sort of a, you know, this remote thing. And then, they were the most expensive with, then there's a number of things that are not included in that that could drive the cost higher. While it's not a huge amount, you know, difference than others, it was a little squishy there for me. So I had them, yeah, they're fine, but I had them down the list anyways. I think I agree with everyone. I don't think we'd probably go wrong in such amount of stuff.
Yeah, well, I also, I just did one, but HDR called two or three of the councils that were on the deal with Dallas when they got their license. And they were very well satisfied with the reports, how they worked with everybody they could within the community. And they were susceptible to new ideas, you know, or directions that they wanted to put to them.
Steve, you have anything else?
No.
You have anything here?
So what was Darren's number one?
Well, I had two, Barney and Worth and BDS is very close.
So it kind of sounds like, from what I've heard, that Barney and Worth and BDS are seem to be the top two, everybody's list. I think I was the only one who spoke up for HDR, so. Was that a fair assessment?
Yeah, so the question is, is anyone willing to go to bat for HDR or Cogan Owens Green?
Well, I kind of went to bat for HDR, but, you know, it's a good old, I had a tendency to try to pick up on people and what they're going to bring to the table, and that was what I picked up on as much as anything. I was impressed with the team, so.
That was my number two, was HDR.
Okay. Anybody else had HDR on their list, Ty? Okay, so is my perception accurate that Barney and Worth and BDS seem to be our top two?
I'd agree with that, yes.
It seems to me you either need a motion, or you could, if you wanted to, go down the call for vote and have each councillor say their first, their top choice, and eliminate the bottom, and go until you have a winner. But somehow you need a motion and a vote.
Well.
But that would be one way to process elimination, to have each councillor state their preference, and you drop out the last place, and then do it again until you have a draw.
Can I get a vote in this one?
No, you do it, because it comes out three to three.
I was thinking maybe I could, since it's just picking a contractor, but I guess not.
So just point of information, total cost proposed by Barney and Worth is forty-four thousand eight hundred. Total cost proposed by BDS is fifty thousand on the notes. In other words, exactly what we wrote out for.
Yeah, which does not include, but they specify some things that that bid did not include, which may or may not be tough to tell, you know, how expensive that would be. Printing and meeting incidentals, food beverages, and so on are not part of this proposal, so that's probably not a lot of money.
And that's common with a lot of them. What they're talking about is-
We thought Barney and-
Yeah, we're having a community group come out. They're not going to buy everybody pizza out of their teeth.
And I might say too, just for the, what you're looking for is the lowest responsible bidder, so it's not exclusively priced. You can make the determination that other factors justify selection, if they have a higher cost consultant, if those other intangibles or factors justify that.
Yeah, and just to argue, and I mean not argue, but to provide some insight, BDS, their deliverables are clearly a review of existing documents, a new communications plan, a new outreach plan, proposal, presentation of their analysis and findings, a core value statement, and a community vision statement, which I believe fits pretty much everything we're looking to get out of this process.
Okay, well, Marshall, so what's your number one choice?
BDS.
Go ahead.
BDS.
Barney and Worth.
I'm green. Cogan Owens green.
And I was BDS.
John?
Barney and Worth.
Okay, so I've got three BDSs, two Barney and Worths, and a cog in on a screen.
You need four.
So we eliminate one and then go down the line again?
So it looks, well, I think we can take HDR off the list completely because it got no votes. So I hesitate to just go run again, because those in the running are the same. Would it be, no, I'm sorry, yeah, would it be appropriate to drop cogging on a screen because it only has one supporter at this point? Well, sorry?
Yes, so, some majority groups.
Is that, does everybody feel that's appropriate?
Well, since we wanted to propose a motion and you get the vote.
No.
No, that doesn't work under the charter.
Sorry, sir.
Yeah, no. So is that okay with everybody to go ahead and drop cogging on a screen with only having one vote, so?
Yeah, do you feel heard on that, Ralph?
No, well, you asked for opinion from that.
Okay, you feel heard, I'm sorry, not heard.
So I've got two, Barney and Worth, and three BDSs. And Ralph, where would you go?
Barney and Worth.
What's that? Barney and Worth? So guess what? It's a three-three tie. We're here about it. And, you know, good arguments all around for both of these.
If I could throw out one comment?
Yes.
Something in, maybe to kind of change the flavor of dashes, that Barney and Worth was one of the few ones that didn't have a steering committee as part of the process. They're obviously doing a lot of other scanning ways to get people, but if that was something that's important to you, that'd be direction, if you went that direction, that would go. Now, if we do that, there's a good chance that that would push the cost up a little bit, so you'd probably get a little bit closer to BDS if you went that route. So just a consideration point to throw out.
What do y'all think about the steering committee thing? Do we need to have a group of local citizens helping plot this thing out and so on?
Are you asking that influence your vote, because they voted?
Yeah, I know. I'm just, I'm asking for input on this to see if that's important to councils. I hear nothing. So it's not important to council, maybe you didn't.
No, I'm sure there's value to it, not having been through it. It's a little difficult to know. It's just another layer.
Right.
They, and while they didn't include that, they did include the project charter, which fairly tightly is going to frame the parameters of which that will drive the process, which I felt was good with the Barney and Worth folks. And they also made a pretty strong point to economic, an economic scan to create some reality checks. made a pretty strong point to economic, an economic scan to create some reality checks.
I said after clarification, the better way to look at it is what they proposed. That's what they're, that's what their forte is. That's how they like to parse the project.
We're in a vote now.
Give me just a second. I have one last look and remind myself.
While you're doing that, let me just say for the record, so we get to the minute, that by consensus, as to the process, we are at a point now where there are three votes for Barney and Worth and three votes for BDS, which constitutes a tie. The mayor will break with a, with a vote.
You're right. I really do like both of these. I mean, that's one of the things we said was all of them were good. So I'm having a hard time taking these round.
Like Kevin Costner in that movie Swing, though. Taking the mayor to lunch.
And so I'm kind of, one of the things that I've been impressed with of visiting with other cities was what Junction City has done coming out of their visioning process. And it felt like it was a very thorough job. Hillsborough is another one that has caught my eye. And I see they're, they're involved with both of those. And, you know, I'm really, I think I'm gonna go with Barney and Worth, although it is a tough decision. So with that, I'll cast mine for Barney and Worth. Okay, so get on the horn and the horn. And the last item on our Business Agenda, and I have a second reading of an ordinance to adopt the Astound Franchise Agreement. And I will read by title that ordinance, which will be, if I can find the page from Phyllis, I've gotten kind of lost in all my papers. This will be ordinance number 1354. And by title, an ordinance granting a franchise to Astound Broadband LLC, a Washington limited liability company, to conduct a general telecommunications business and granting a right to use public rights away within the city. And if there are any questions for staff or discussion around this, Ron?
Yes, I have one. And I know it wasn't on the first deal, but on section 11, an obligation to repair and damage. And the reason I bring this up is, how strong can we make that? Because my net, we had to come out and redo the street because they, they humped the street when they put underneath it. Plus, two of our sidewalks fell down three inches when they bored underneath them. And we never got the sidewalks fixed, but it only took six months to get the street fixed. So I, I see this section in here as obligation to repair. What I'm saying is, how long does it take to repair? Because mine that's never repaired the ones that did damage on our street now. So is there much behind that?
I mean, there is, but it really depends on how aggressive this thing wants to be in enforcing. Yeah, the obligation is very clear.
Okay, that's what I'm saying. Because they did cause a lot of damage and nothing was done for.
Do we know if there was a, just curious?
I have no idea on that case number.
Okay.
If they're gonna be born putting trees up, things, then they're, they're gonna cause damage to the street.
Any other comments or questions? Motion?
Move second reading and approval of ordinance number 1354, granting a franchise to Astound Broadband.
Second?
Second.
Move the seconded, Phyllis?
Counselor Schaefer?
Aye.
Counselor Milligan?
Aye.
Counselor Carey?
Aye.
Counselor Silvernagle?
Aye.
Counselor Guthrie?
Aye.
Counselor Johnson?
Aye.
And we will grant that franchise. And that brings us to the end of the Business Agenda. Any council comments tonight?
I was looking over Phyllis's shoulder. I'd already had my speech of the night. If I misspoke and I said Pathways was responsible for the, the bike.
I have that.
Okay, it's not Pathways, it's the rural tourism studio folks.
Okay, I'm just gonna go back and look.
You're gonna go back and check? Okay. So just to be clear and for the record, so we can correct them as rural tourism.
I'll correct them right now.
Okay, so we have on the agenda a work session, followed by a couple of executive sessions. And so I get to read the executive session script twice. Should I do them both now, Lane?
Sure, you may as well, as long as everyone understands. We won't actually, we need the executive session until after the work session.
Okay, and.
Well, actually, you probably should only read the city council one because the Urban Renewal Agency isn't convened at this point.
I'll read the city council one only. Because one of the, we have two executive sessions, and one is council only, and the other is council and Urban Renewal Agency, the other. So the city council will now meet in executive session for the purpose of discussing real property transaction discussions. The executive session is held per cent at O R S 192.6602E, real property transactions, which allows the council to meet in executive session. Representatives of the news media and designated staff or other person shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision may be made in executive session. At the end of executive session, we'll return to open session and welcome the audience back in the room. And it is not anticipated that action will be taken this evening after returning from executive session. And now, Lane, my notion, because we do have guests for the joint meeting, was to have this last and.
That's fine. That's fine. So immediately after work session, you can convene the Urban Renewal Agency and the council in joint executive session.
Okay, and so with that, I would ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting to, until after work session and the two executive, or the, the Urban Renewal Agency meeting. And then we'll come back together in executive session as the council.
I'll make the motion adjourn.
Second?
Moving seconded in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Okay.